Oh, all right. Well, welcome everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the January 12th edition of the Plumbton Borders Selectment meeting. Welcome and Happy New Year for those that we haven't said so before. So same ground rules as usual. I think everyone in the room quite used to them and probably no need to recite tonight. We will have just a few moments of silence for reflection or preparation in any way that So again, good evening and we again welcome the people from the Halifax Carver Shared Cable Studio and we appreciate them being here and filming this for broadcast. So I guess we jump in. First agenda item is the annual report. Kristin sent out a memo and we have to get to work on the Board of Selectmen report. Last year John and Joe tried to convince me that the new kid on the Board of Selectmen was required to write the thing. I sort of bought that but somehow along the way I was able to convince Dale that he should do it so, and he did a great job last year. So we have two choices because Colleen, when she wrote the annual report for Community Preservation Committee, did this amazing job, so...
Why do I get a sense this is three against one?
Yes, because I wasn't on the board for part of last year, so it doesn't make sense for me to write the report.
Okay. So do we think we'd like to ask Dale to write a first draft and then have us take a look at it?
Will do.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, no problem at all. And why, if you have whatever you'd like to, the three of you individually or collectively would like to include, just email me so I, you know, there's any spots you want to put in there.
And so there's actually, is there a February deadline on that? Do you remember?
Yeah.
And you have, you have the email with the details, a lot of details about proper type set and character size.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you Dale. All right, so the next item is the West and Cross Street traffic issues. Have you all had a chance to take a look at the report we received last week? So I have spoken to the police chief, I've spoken to Jim Mulcahy with Highway, and I think we came to a general consensus on at least a suggestion to deal with that. The report we received seemed to imply that there wasn't much speeding going on on the street and the general consensus was changing the speed limit would have some problems associated with it. The proposal or the suggestion is the following, that a stop sign be put at the end of Cross Street. There would be a sign before it that said "Stop Sign Ahead" warning. And then two signs, one on either side, on West Street, on either side of Cross Street, which would either be an advisory slow sign or one of those curved, curve ahead signs to warn people of the somewhat, or to be careful as they came to that intersection. So the goal there would be to clean up a little the confusion on who has to stop where without disrupting traffic majorly. Everybody seemed on board with that. I took a look over there again today and I think that would improve the situation considerably.
Sounds good to me.
So I make a motion that we proceed that way and we ask Mr. Mulcahy to move forward with those actions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Done with that. So next is public safety buildings. I believe you asked for that, John, to be on the agenda?
Probably. I just wanted you, to let you guys know that we're starting the process to at least make an attempt at getting something prepared for town meeting. Dale and I and the police chief met today, we're gonna meet again but bring in the fire chief and go from there. I think that we owe it to the townspeople to at least bring them something. We may, after doing this for a month, we may say it's not doable, I don't know, but we do have a lot of ideas on how cheaply it can be done if we do things like space metal buildings and stuff like that, you know, not, not a Cadillac but a Chevrolet. One of the things that, one of the major reasons why we need to at least attempt to do this is because right now we can't get 2.8 percent long-term bonding.
How much?
2.8.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
And the more historical norm is three and a half to four, which makes a considerable difference. So moving now while interest rates are low, especially if we pursue using the report that was, that the committee generated, which is excellent to give us some ideas as to how it works, we can, we can actually put together some real cost savings there doing it a little bit differently rather than having it, you know, built from scratch. There are canned products out there that would work fine for us.
We, I mean, what they're on the table, I only think we really can do it for half of that if it's, if it's done with prefab buildings and pre-engineered buildings, so it's built someplace else, we don't have to worry about prevailing wage and all that type of stuff. And you had the bond company run some numbers.
I have them run the 20-year numbers, I'm gonna have them run the 25.
But on a 20-year number, using what, eight million or seven?
Seven million. Using seven million, the payback, the payback at 2.8 percent is 549,000 annually. So basically cut that number in half if you get half the cost, which I believe we probably can come close to that and still have perfectly adequate buildings for 25 years. You would, you would have, you know, half of that, say 275,000 dollars a year, and all of that money is accrued in the capital account every year by our own bylaws, which means that it would not even hit the tax rate. It would be, we would solve the infrastructure problem without anybody raising their taxes.
So I have two questions.
Forgive me, I'm actually gonna step down on this because I'm gonna butter to one of the properties that's being considered for this. I think for the moment I shouldn't.
Well, done.
We're not gonna discuss.
We're not, we're not. I actually started looking at...
Well, that was my question.
I started looking at the other piece of property and it...
Well, I know, and that's all the more reason I think...
No, no, just relax. It's not gonna be, it's not...
John, I wanna step down. I can speak as a private citizen from down below.
Okay.
So where is this thing?
I'm looking at the piece of property that a lot of folks think is viable for something like this. And these two pieces, where this is, this is at the corner of Main Street in Wintoxit.
Okay.
This is, this is town-owned land.
Peanut property.
Peanut property. This is part of her property, as is this. So you pick up that, which is, which is, again, these, the things could be wrong, could be up, which is not enough, but beside of that is a piece that is owned by a person that has bought up, over the years bought up a lot of tax property. And he, you know, I'm pretty sure that that piece, and it's, it goes on to this too. So it's bigger than, than it's just here. It includes, you know, this here. If you put that parcel with it, I think you'd end up with a knife, so it can't be looked at.
So we're hoping for a donation or we're going to be purchasing that?
We would probably have to purchase it.
Okay. And what about the engineering study that was going to be done for this site?
It's in the process right now. We'll have that. I'll have that probably within a couple of weeks or 10 days or so, he promised me. And this site becomes very viable and there are options depending on how you wanna do it, where we may be able to actually accomplish what we need to accomplish for the town for the next 25 years. The feels would stay, they wouldn't go.
One of the things that the study didn't do is use the basement.
Oh.
And so your footprint will be quite a bit smaller because a lot of the police-related stuff can be in the basement, cells and things like that can be in the basement, so...
Okay. So that takes care of that question, where's the, sort of thinking of this property or possibly that property?
Well, I dig back into the one I talked to about swapping. And there's a wetlands issue, but there again, in looking through the thing, there's a parcel, parcel that, I don't know how the people ended up with it. It's, you know, when we were looking down Main Street when trying to figure out what that lot was, well, it's assessed for $12,000 and it's just somebody that's had it forever. I don't know if they even paid taxes on it, I'm gonna check...
And this is basically across from the cafe?
Yeah.
How big was that, John? It wasn't a very big piece. An acre to an acre.
It's an acre and a half.
An acre and a half?
But it fit, you know, the wetland is there, now you've got more along the highway that's not wet. So that may be viable too. But with all of this said, I think that we could end up spending some money, so I, I mean, I'm gonna propose that we sell some lots in the town and use that funds to buy this other land if we can make it work.
Okay, then my other, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but this is the sort of thing that I was hoping for when we talked about working meetings before. Because, you know, I was reading the mail today and I could sort of hear you, it's like, this is really interesting, I wanna hear this, I wanna be there. And is that something we can do?
You can, you can do it, but you're gonna have to post a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Which is fine.
That's okay. So that would be the kind of meeting that we do during the day so that the police chief and the fire chief could participate?
Yeah.
I, I would like to do that. And as long as it's not on a Tuesday, I can do it.
Okay. We can do that.
That was the charge of the building committee when they handed the study over to you, they said, Mr. Borders Selectmen, now you cite it and, and bring it forward, bring, bring the project forward. And after...
We are set tomorrow, so you...
It's all set.
Sit out, you can sit out and listen like you did today, but, but from now on we'll make them, you know, post meetings. Tomorrow, tomorrow, what we need to do is go back through what we were given by those consultants and make sure that everything that's in there is needed, you know, so both chiefs have gotta look and say, you know...
I can do without this or...
Yeah, whatever, so that, so that we really get an idea as to what we really need to do.
Okay. We have some people out there.
I was just wondering, and you may have, you did just address it, but what the group did before when they did the study, it was pretty comprehensive and they did meet with both the chiefs and all that, and wouldn't they have sort of looked into doing a sort of a half as good building if they could've? I mean, wouldn't they have tried to do this the least expensive way?
Yeah, well, they didn't for whatever reason. I mean, they, they had expensive construction. What we're, we're gonna find out, we're gonna contact Morton Buildings and people like that and see if they've ever done something like this before. And basically you have modular buildings, so you, your cost gets cut in half without prevailing wage.
Come into it a little bit.
Pardon me?
Aesthetics would come into it a little bit, wouldn't it, if it's gonna be in the center of town and be here forever, I mean, like that part of this building's been here for how many years?
No, I mean, you can, you can cover that with clapboards or whatever is appropriate. It just wouldn't be brick.
And then sometimes they do a simple brick facade on the outside of metal buildings, which, which works out fine too, and, and you can't really tell from looking at it that it's not. But when you consider the possibility of the, like, the mobile unit that we bought that's in the parking lot now, that's 1,045 square feet. Three of those would, custom-built and laid out, but three of those would make a perfect police station, so...
As long as we don't have to look at it.
Pardon me?
As long as we don't have to look at it.
Well, what you would do...
You're gonna have to.
What you would do in that case is you'd buy three units and they would be put on a common foundation together and then you'd trust roof, it's, it would have a regular peak roof and it could be, I mean, the exterior could be anything you wanted because you'd be ordering it. But it would be relatively much less expensive than ordering a stick-built, you know, an onsite stick-built building. And, and not that I'm dissing the people who did this study, but they're generally in the business of, they're in the business of architectural design and so on, so the last place they ever go is to a prefab building. They don't wanna do that because they don't make any money if they do that.
We're chasing down a couple of towns that have done this.
The only question that I have, I have an uncle that built most of the Yale buildings and built most of the buildings apart from the country. And when they built those buildings, they built, they built it fifty years ago, they're just no standard. So when you build a city building, always think, okay, a lot of your buildings today look nice, they're big things, they're built like a college. They put a lot of nice things around them and over them. So I mean, if you're gonna build a building, I mean, you either build it the right way or you don't build it at all. Because you wanna build it, especially if it's a city or state or municipal building or a college building, you build those things to look nice, but you also build them to last. Now, I mean, a good example is like for instance, over here you have wood moldings and a lot of your modern office buildings, what do they have? They have rubber moldings, they're ridiculous. So that's, that's a perfect example. If they don't build these buildings right, they're gonna fall apart, they're gonna fall on your head in 20 years. So what you're gonna be doing is replacing them with money that you didn't wanna spend to begin with. End of story. Oh my God.
It's, I mean, that, that's a point of view and I, I understand that, but it basically it will be put to, it'll be to town meetings.
Yeah.
That's it.
But you understand what I'm saying?
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you know, buildings like that usually are built to last, you know, and you want them to look nice and you want them to last because you don't wanna keep, you know, spending, spending, spending. In the long run, you lose your shirt.
I perfectly understand, but if, if we can build a building for, and I'll, I'll pick a number, 4 million or less, we, it will not affect the tax rate and there will still be extra money in that capital stabilization account for other things. If, if we spend the kind of money that, you know, building the first-class building that you're talking about, if we spend seven or eight million dollars, it will use every penny of the money coming from Cisco today, and today, and Cisco, a lot of the tax money we get is on personal property. And that's, that's gone in five years, so it's, what...
There is, there is a heavy reading. I mean, we listen to some of these high schools, I coached those college students and I played it a lot and read it out a lot of different stadiums, okay? And when you see how they built some of these high school stadiums, they look like Taj, you take the stadiums for schools, that's what I meant, they look like Taj Mahal. So there's, you know, there's, there's a halfway median there, you know? I mean, it's sometimes it's ridiculous, I mean, you know, they, I don't know what they're looking for, building college or what, you know?
No, you're right, but the huge savings here, we believe, is by not having to pay prevailing wage for most of the construction. Because that doubles the cost. And the only way that we can think of to do this, there's another possibility that we've talked about, and potentially we could find somebody, a landlord, that would be willing to build us a building and lease it to us. That's, that's another alternative, and we're all, we're gonna look at that too.
There's a lot of eligibility there, a lot of...
Pardon me?
It's making off schools sometimes, you know?
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot of developers that, that will do that. You know, if you look at the malls, I mean, all those malls, all malls are built by a developer. They lease the space, you know? So a couple of opportunities.
See, I haven't picked this site yet, right?
Pardon me?
You haven't picked this site? Right. Just make sure you're not in the wetlands because the cell's down the basement. I know a lot of the land up where you, I first heard there, I've been there a lot of times, and it's really, really...
Yeah, a lot of, and we talked, we talked about that too, we may have to elevate everything, no matter where you build in town, because the water table is so high and, and all that. I mean, that's, that's a real consideration.
Yeah, but that's, it's a big concern over there.
We would like, if, if we do do it this way, we would like to have at least part of the basement be at ground level so you can exit and enter, you know, so you know, built into a hill, if you will, but, and again, I mean, we're just, we've had a couple of meetings, we're just getting started, but we're gonna make an effort at least to have something ready.
I assume you talked refurbishing this building before you paid off the lease?
Yeah, and this, that's, the study people, for some reason, spent a lot of time on rehabbing this and that, that's just not gonna happen. I mean, it's rehabbed as much as it needs to be, you know, it's, and we talked about doing something with the current fire station, but it would be much more expensive trying to rehab that than it would be starting from scratch, so I for one would not like to see it torn down. I think we could continue to use it for storage and things like that. I think that the new fire station could be smaller because you could store things like the brush breakers and things like that there. We wouldn't have to build new space for a lot of things like that and the highway department needs storage, so, I mean, I think, I think that building can remain useful and we can have a smaller footprint for anything new that we build.
Also, if you have, if you have two fire stations in town, even if we just were using that for storage, it puts you in a different ISO rating. Your, basically your homeowner's insurance drops on, on fire and so on and so forth.
Yes?
When you build fire stations or railroads, are you able, because of what it is, okay, in other words, it's for the benefit of the citizens? Are you able to get loans or consideration from state or federal government for those things, if it shows that it's needed?
Loans or, I mean, what were our...
Sometimes you just...
Well, we're looking for greens.
Like, well, you know, when you build a highway, when you build a highway, the federal government doesn't, they supply 75% of the money. It's, it's a mix, you know? That's why Reagan forced those tandem trailers down our throats, you know? I like Reagan, but I don't like that one. But he forced those tandem trailers down our throat whether we wanted them or not because they control the highways. But again, the police stations and fire stations, I'm wondering if...
At times there is money, there has been in the past.
Yeah.
We don't think there's any available now, but Colleen has some information on North Brookfield where they did get a grant, so we're gonna, we're looking for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, we've been lucky, we've gotten a lot of grants over the last three or four years and we look for them.
Yep.
Okay.
See, Mark, there was nothing bad there.
No, no, and nothing bad at all, I just, because I'm a butter to one of the, one property that is still up as a possibility, I think the safest, surest thing to avoid a conflict of interest is to step down.
Look at, at least look at this. That's Pina.
Yeah.
That's Pina. And then this piece is the one I'm talking about that I'm sure can be bought.
Where are, which?
Wintoxit, Maine.
Yep.
Towns, that town strip, which helps a little.
Yep.
A little bit.
Yep. I'm speaking as a private citizen, that area is the exact right place for it, I think, and this beautiful multi-use of that property, the rest of the property for open space, access to the river, maybe even senior housing, it's a beautiful project. Okay. Next. Let's see. So the next two items, actually, you know, I gave you guys the agenda, there's an additional agenda item that was added, which is, how did we label that? Well, which were some alternatives on, on public broadcasting.
Cable alternatives?
Yeah. All right, so the next two items are cable alternatives and a request for town council time for enterprise fund town meeting articles, so they kind of go together. Mr. Henry has passed something out, maybe you wanna tell us what you passed out?
This, this is the, the standard article that you use when, the second document here is the actual law that was passed that goes into effect January 15th, and this is the standard article that you would put in front of the town meeting. And I just saw, and it's not a, typically what we do with warrants, and Dale's gonna add that to his list and start, usually Dale will shepherd this and he'll go through what we did last year, and there's a lot of them that are the same, and then we'll, all of us will sit there and say, okay, we need one for this, we need one for that, whatever. Then at times, there are complicated ones that we have town council write. Usually we take a shot at it and then they go to town council. So I'm, I'm just, I mean, this one I don't see as an extremely difficult one.
And, you know, the main reason I put that on is going to town council for that is, you may remember, we got into some complications and discussions about this and, and I, what I wanna make absolutely sure is that the proposed tri-town cable, if we go that way, we need the other towns to be absolutely comfortable that we've got this town meeting article correct. So this may be a good starting point to check with Alana and I would seek permission to just fill her in on the situation from a little bit earlier and offer...
Well, just, I don't, I don't know if you wanna go piecemeal with articles or not, but I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. The, what's interesting in researching this today, the town, and I wanna say it was Pembroke, somebody actually went last summer to do this and got legislation. You know how, how we got the thing for the stabilization account? So prior to this new law, you could've done this, but it would require a legislature to do it, but...
Just for my peace of mind, I guess, I would like to ask this board for permission to go to town council, maybe with this as a template, as a starting point to just fill in Alana on the issues. I just wanna have this pinned down. I mean, there may be other, other articles related to this, but to just spend a little time with her so she's fully up to speed on what we did in December and the two agreements that we would consider signing based on the passage of this. So I'd like to make a motion that I go to Alana and just fill her in on this and get her blessing on this before we get into a busy time of, for town council and for us. So that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So, so did you wanna discuss more about cable?
Yeah, the, what, what I intend to do is go to, well, I don't know yet because I haven't done all the work yet, so I don't know if I have the right answers or not, but I think there's an alternative and so I'm gonna go to town meeting with an alternative. But this, either way, we're gonna need this fund and, you know, either way that we go. By doing this, what it does eliminate is it has to be appropriated every year, even though you've got this fund, it has to be appropriated every year.
And I think that's why we definitely need to talk to Alana because I, you know, the vast majority, if not every single town in Massachusetts, doesn't do it that way.
Well, I've found quite a few that, that do.
The vast majority do not.
And like I said, Pembroke actually went... And like I said, Pembroke actually went, uh...
I, I'm not sure that we would be able to join the tri-town agreement if it were going to be subject to annual town meeting vote. I, I don't think that works, so...
Well, that's the only way you can, pretty much the only way you can, I mean, you can agree to sign the contract, and the contract can't be more than three years, so you're in a situation where it'd be three years instead of one, where you'd have to renew that, renew that agreement. But if you do it in the form of the legislation that you have there, which is essentially a revolving account, like the several other revolving accounts we have, they're all renewed every year as well. Just, that's the way the law reads, it has to be revoted every year.
Well, I, I think this is what we're gonna have to pursue and get pinned down well as we make our decision at town meeting.
And you're, you're interested in an internet alternative, which I also think is interesting. I really think it would be better to have both, both options. The internet only, we, we have a lot of elderly people in town who do not have a computer.
They also have a lot of people that don't have cable.
Well, that's true, but that's, that's more their choice, whereas with the older people, it's more a generational fact.
You could, you can make DVDs available, this movie's getting around that, but it could be played here in the town hall, in the library. Again, you need the internet, but the, the town of Douglas that I sent you, the stuff on it, they actually can get it on iTunes.
So, you're gonna look into it more, basically, it's the one.
Okay, onward goes the discussion about the future of cable, cable communication and broadcasting. The next item is electronic communications policy, and we did receive an email from the assessor wondering about a privacy disclaimer. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Some people use them, some people don't use them. I mean, it's not, I, I think if you're gonna use the one, and I, I didn't recommend this to them, because I didn't answer that email right away, but, I mean, it basically says if you've received it. It's a standard privacy disclaimer that you would get, private business uses that exact one, a lot of them. I think you also have to include in it that this is a public document, you know, because it is a public document, and so that, you know, that so that people understand when they're, you know, when they're in correspondence, that they're actually not writing, you know, a confidential message necessarily, it's a, it's a, it's an open document. It can be retrieved at the request of anybody. That I would add to a, that I would add to a privacy statement if, if you choose to, to use one. Some people don't, I mean, some towns don't, some communities don't use them at all, and some do.
Any sense amongst the board? My inclination is to, that this could get complicated and that we've done okay as is for the moment, and you think I would want to stay that way.
It would seem that we wouldn't need a town-wide one, but she came, she spoke to me today, and it seems like they regularly use it. I don't know that we'd want to prohibit them from using it, if they feel it's necessary.
No, it's perfectly, I mean, the one they're using is perfect, is perfectly good. Like I said, the only thing I would do is include that it, you know, that it is a public document, which kind of throws, runs in the face of, of you can't, you know, you can't, you know, it's, it's, their disclaimer says that it's, it's confidential, but your emails are not in government, in town government, not in the state unfortunately, but in town municipal governments, your emails are not confidential. I mean, you don't have to share them around, but if someone wants them, you have to have, you have to hand them over, so.
And then the documents we get from the lawyers.
Pardon me?
We get documents from the lawyers.
That's different.
Okay.
Not, that's different, but, that's different, but, I mean, in, in general, any email responding to a citizen or anything like that from one of the departments, that's public information. I didn't make the rule. Like I said, if it was, if I made the rule, it would apply to everybody on Beacon Hill as well as all of us.
Right, so the public needs to be made aware that any response that they make via email is therefore a public document?
Yeah, and, 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 right, and, and I mean, you know, but if you're not the intended recipient, you know, delete the email and notify the person you got it from, that's all legitimate as well.
I'm not inclined to take any action, I'm open to your...
Well, what is this, is this...
This is what the lawyer says, and this is what Doug Stewart puts on.
Yeah, she can't have that on there.
Yeah, I disagree with it, actually, and I, I think it's a bag of worms that we don't have to get into for the whole town by any means.
She can't do that.
So, then, do we need to tell her that, or do we need her to have a conversation with Dale, or?
The, there probably are some documents that they have that are confidential.
Yeah, I mean, anything that require, well, I mean, personal information, in other words, the Board of Health sending something out, and it has HIPAA information in it or anything like that, then that's a confidential document. Anything that deals with personnel are confidential.
Well, the assessors get a lot of information on, with a sixty-one A application, financial information, stuff like that. That stuff is...
And that, that would be an attachment, which would be, in fact, confidential.
Yes.
So, we don't actually know why she's using, she, she may not attach this to every document she sends out, just those particular documents.
Yeah, which, that's fine.
But for routine communication, it's not technically confidential. You know, if there, if, if somebody's filling out an application with financial information and social security numbers and all the, whatever, whatever it takes to, to do, to do a sixty-one A, or if there's any kind of, you know, legal interaction between the Board of Assessors...
And that's actual income statements and...
Income statements, well, about that. Those things are not, those things are not, they're not, I mean, they're not generally available to the public. If someone were to challenge it and say, well, you know, I disagree with this particular sixty-one A application for this person, well, then you, but that still becomes a matter of the lawyers dealing with it, not, it doesn't get spread around in the public. But the, but the one that they're using, I tend to agree with John, and you just can't throw that blanket disclaimer that this is a confidential document on every email you send out, because that's not true.
Okay, and we don't know that she does?
No, I don't, I just said...
Just, just that when she uses one, this is what she uses.
Yeah, but when the email she sent you, she said, this is the one we use, but she didn't say that they use it on all, all, all the time. And probably they don't, I'm sure that they just use it when they're dealing with stuff that's obviously sensitive.
Can you check with them, just clarify that?
Okay. Solar ongoing projects, I think we're at a lull.
Well, I, I talked to Blue Wave, and they're, they're of course tangled up in the same law than we are, and I guess it's not going to be quick, and maybe, when you're talking to Alana on the other thing, maybe, because I thought it was gonna be something that was quick because the appeal wasn't filed on time, but this, I, he seemed to think the earliest would be six months, and it could be two years.
He, he, Blue Wave, the Blue Wave people thought of it?
They've, they've got their council, and the council's working with our town council. And our town council hasn't told me it was a matter of days, but I just assumed that it was, but it's a bad assumption, I guess.
Okay. So, by the way, at any point, if, if your solar bylaw committee wants to report or communicate, we're, we're open to that?
Okay, we're, we're just working our way through it.
Okay. Yeah. All right, let's see, future Board of Selectment schedule, we, I believe next Monday is a holiday, so our next few meetings will be January twenty-sixth, and then February second, ninth, and twenty-third, I guess.
With the possibility of another working meeting.
Great. Okay, I think that brings us to, anything else in terms of town coordinator reporting?
Uh, I did mention it to you, but I'll mention it, just to get it on the record. I did hear from Malita Ordway, the DOR, Department of Revenue today, and she did say that the study that they did on Clinton Financial, Operational and Financial is in the final stage of review, and since she gets it, she'll be forwarding it to us, so I assume that's getting fairly close. And you all have a new email address. We're working on those, we're bit by bit. I have one for each of you, and I'll send you the email with the passwords and all of that kind of stuff, and also the Board of Assessors. And those are done, next will be the Board of Appeals, so that will be, we've got, we've got Conservation Commission and Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors.
I, I do see that FinCom has budget requests out to all departments and boards, which you prepare, but we'll discuss that along the way?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, usually I just generally put the budget together and anticipate, well, the other thing that I would ask the board is if, that under your budget items, which are essentially insurance and counthouse and, you know, and, or whatever, would you like to, is there any request that the board wants to put into their FY sixteen budget? You know, that's up to you, I, I, I'm not adding anything new to it.
Maybe we'll make that as an agenda item for next, or two weeks from now.
Okay. Now, there's something that came from the Finance Committee saying they're looking for a level service.
Level service budget.
Well, what they've done is, is they made two pages essentially in the budget request. The first one is a level service budget, and then additional requests on a separate page beyond level service.
Perhaps they should have said level funded and not level service, because level service means level service, but it doesn't address whether the cost goes up or down.
Yeah. Well, I think what they were asked for, if I, I just skimmed it today, is the first page is a level service budget, and the second page would be additional services or additional requests.
Probably what they intended.
Okay. We're up to correspondence.
Okay, this is from T. Talich Company, who is going to have a presence at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting. They are advocating tax title assignment sale auctions, which is supposedly a quick way for the towns to make money by selling their tax titles to somebody else.
We, two, three years ago, we put a lot of time into looking at it, and it, and we have so little, it doesn't make any sense, but we have explored that.
This is from the Winnetoxic Children's Place, which is a daycare. Basically, this is not an animal complaint, but rather letting us know that there has been a situation with a neighbor's dog, and the animal officer from Halifax and Plington have both been called in. The neighbors, they're hoping that the neighbors are taking care of it, keep the dog under control, so it's not troubling the people and picking up their children and the children, but it is not yet a formal complaint. That's for you, that's for you. It's for me, this is from the municipal, Massachusetts Municipal Association, about the Board of Directors' annual meeting at the trade show in Boston on January twenty-fourth. Obviously, they'd like people to attend. This is the agenda for the business meeting. This is also about the annual business meeting, requesting our voting member, which will be the chair, to attend.
I'll be there. Actually, the governor, the newly elected governor will be presenting also.
All right, somehow I missed this one.
He's a Republican.
Pardon?
He's a Republican.
A moderate Republican.
You, you can't attend that, can you?
I am unlovable, now I won't go into it. I admire moderate will. I admire radical moderation everywhere, if that's not a too paradoxical term.
This is a notice of resignation from Doug Hall, who's resigning from the Silver Lake School Committee for personal reasons. He, he's actually moving to Halifax and is no longer able to be on our board.
So, do we have to take action on that?
We've got to, I think we've got to ask the, what do we have, we have just two, right?
Yeah, I think so.
So...
Maureen.
Maureen, you got to ask her if she's got any of your recommendations. I think it's just us, it's not the school committee and us, just the selectmen that appoint?
It's the selectmen that appoint. Customary to ask that committee who they might have any recommendations, but it's, it's your, it's your...
I'll, I'll check with Maureen if she has any recommendations, and we'll go from there, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's just until the next election, or is it for the remainder of the term?
Did he put on there how much, how much longer his term is? He just got elected this last time. What's that?
I think he was just elected this last time.
In that case, you would probably appoint until this election, and you would put it on ballot.
Just check that, because some positions, some positions are like that, and some are you appoint the remainder of the term.
These are copies of three letters from Resource Controls to people on Main Street regarding the private well sampling that resulted from the gasoline release, and three of them had lead levels, two below the drinking water standard, and one above.
Are these the new, the new ones, or the existing ones? Because we've, we've had these for a while, I think.
These letters were issued on December nineteenth, it doesn't say if it's the, the new wells that we just...
Well, it can't, can't be, because we just, when was the guy in?
Yeah.
It was just out there a little bit ago, a half a day.
Yeah, this has got to be the old ones, yeah.
Yeah, these are, this is from the old well, there was some question of whether they had took these samples before or after the filtering process, so I'm, I'm not sure.
Plus, they say that, you know, a lot of the houses have lead in their pipes, and they didn't let the water run long enough, and the one, the one house that is above the levels, they're going to be tested in this quarter. This is the Halifax Plington Express. This is from the Mass Department of, well, it's from Robert Gomez and General Kehe, getting our reimbursement from the Mass Department of Transportation, so we need to sign those, and that's yours, so it's you have to sign. Mark and I have already signed. And this is the application for use of town property for the strawberry shark cake race, which I believe you need to sign.
Okay. We voted on this at the last meeting, didn't we?
I believe we did, I certainly mentioned it.
Okay. That's it for correspondence?
That's for correspondence.
Okay. Dates to remember, Board of Selectment meetings we mentioned, and that brings us up to the minutes for the January fifth meeting. Everybody have a chance to take a look at these?
The only real thing I had was that, it was just an addition, I thought it was really interesting that the forty-five thousand dollars that was raised came from over three hundred donors. And I just thought it'd be nice to put that in there.
Great, we pass that on to Kristen. Make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have exhausted the amendment.
Good.
If not ourselves. All right.
ZBAA hearing tomorrow night?
Yes, that is correct.
For those that are interested, the ZBAA hearing on the...
Group home?
Group home on Brook Street, tomorrow night, seven thirty, is that where it is?
You know, I don't, anyone remember whether it's seven or seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Well, thanks everyone for coming, we'll be back in two weeks, ready to do it again. I wish everyone a... Wish everyone a good couple...
My name's Rick Oliver, and I did ask just for informal meaning about a hostel that I was interested in the town, purchasing to build a single-family home. And I just had a question, I always spoke with Tara, she said to come here at 7:00, excuse me, 7:00. And it is on Lot 7, Map 7, Lot 19. And apparently, I guess, somebody had, the seller tried to subdivide this property. I have no interest in subdividing it, I'm looking for a home site. And, excuse me, the question I had was, it looks like there were some preliminary designs as for subdivision, but it contains 48 acres, and the majority of it is wetlands. There is some high ground that I just, before I got involved with trying to purchase this property, would be curious to know if it is built or not. This is a plan, I guess that was committed from a seller, and I don't know if it was approved. I know the septic design was approved.
So can you orient us, this is Maple Street, this is 58 here?
Main Street here.
Main Street?
Yeah, 58 is on the other side of Maple.
Oh, that property, okay.
And I guess what he had tried to do was divide this into five lots, which, you could see it's all wetland, but this area here had been perked, was approved by the health department for a septic design, and my concern was they were concentrating on this upper lot because he was trying to get approval, I believe, for future lots. He said, "I have no intention on doing something like that." So I was, you know, proposing to put my home pretty much in the same location in a barn, and that would be it. But I know it's informal, I had come in last week and spoke with Tara, she said, "Come here at 7:00," so I could at least present it.
So first of all, did we get your name?
Rick Oliver.
How do you spell it?
This has a lot of history.
Yes, that's why I'm here, because I'm trying to try to get some type of a closure to it.
I don't recall how it ended up, but there was a pile of Concom hearings and stuff like that. So you may, that may be a good starting point for you to find, to go there and see how it was resolved. The abbotter here fought this tooth and nail, and there was a lot of issues with wetlands and wetlands crossings and...
I did meet with the abbotter Sunday, I walked into property with my wife, and she said that, you know, she had fought, if we were going to explain to her we're looking for a single residence, she said she wasn't going to fight. So I gave her my word, it would only be a single residence. So I...
I don't think there's anything really to do with us. It would be...
Okay.
I would start with the Concom, and I don't know if the zoning officer got involved in it?
I've entered the zoning department, the health department, and they said I should come here just to make sure...
There is an approved septic system, the water health hasn't approved that design?
Yes, it's still agreed till 2017.
So then, your best bet is the Concom, but I don't see where it comes into our...
Yes, sounds like Tom Tom. So...
Yeah, this, you went on there, went through that, that was a nightmare. The files got...
I just want to simplify it into one line. So I, you know, before I make the jump and, you know, put an offer on the property, I'd looked at it, I was sure it was available, but where they had already approved the septic, I would think that...
It probably was signed up by the Concom.
Yeah.
I would think, if the water helped, then...
All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Good luck.
All right, thank you. I like the town, so...
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else? I make a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good couple of weeks to everyone, thank you.